I'd like to call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to advise everyone in attendance that it is being recorded. And I'd ask, is there anyone else here recording this meeting? There being none, if you join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, hung on a high wall, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we will start tonight with special recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are actually two teachers from Auburn Middle School, Mr. Bill Wright and Mr. Matt Watson, each of whom have been recognized by students who were former students of Auburn Middle School and who are now attending a private school. And they have been invited to attend a special teacher appreciation breakfast on April 24th at St. John's High School. So I think that this speaks to, obviously, the influence the teachers can have on students, and in particular, these two gentlemen, Mr. Wright and Mr. Watson, have obviously had a long-lasting impact on these students. So I just wanted to recognize and congratulate them for that.
Very nice. We can now move on to the citizens' concerns and comments. Are there any? There being none, we will entertain a motion to accept the regular session minutes for March 27th, 2013.
I'd like that motion to accept the minutes is written.
Second.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this vote. Now move on to the student representative report. Rita's with us this evening.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Rita.
Last Wednesday, I know this is past news, but last Wednesday, Student Council held a student versus faculty basketball game, basketball tournament. And it was our first annual one, so it was very entertaining, and everyone had a great time, and there will be definitely more of those. And also, last Thursday, there was a Rocket of the Week breakfast. And I know it's something small, but it's big to us students because being recognized for little things that we do is very honorable. Guidance has added several new scholarships to Navion, so seniors need to stay updated with those. Spring has finally arrived, along with new sports seasons, so good luck to every single one of the sports out there. And AHS brought back advisory, which is a time for students to be grouped with peers planning on pursuing the similar future career as each other. So it's a good time for everyone to get an idea, especially freshmen, get an idea of what they're planning on doing in the future, and a lot of background information of what they're planning on doing. Junior and senior prom tickets are on sale this week until next week of April 12th. We're not finishing sales then. And that's all for right now. It's kind of a slow start to spring right now, but I'm sure there'll be a lot of news next week. Yeah, thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thanks. We can now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item, as you know, at next week's meeting, the business manager, I will be bringing forward a recommendation to you or finalizing references, but I'm very excited about bringing forward a candidate. The first presentation this evening, we have Mr. Phil Campbell in attendance, Auburn's Director of Pupil Services. And he's going to be speaking, as I noted in the superintendent's memo, about an out-of-the-box thinking that he embraced and actually brought forward in creating a unique plan that addresses the needs of a particular child, but we think has the benefit to truly help other children, especially as they age, continue to age, and get close to the age of aging out at 22 years of age, so to help transition them into their adult life. So with your permission, I will turn it over to Mr. Campbell.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. And thank you very much for the opportunity to give you this, I think, very positive story about how the Auburn team worked together. I'm very mindful of people's privacy, so what I'm going to do today is really give you a very broad overview. There'll be enough details, I think, for you to grasp some of the severity of the situation and also some of the importance of it, given the particular individual. To give you a starting point, two years ago, I joined the team here. One of the things that I did, because of my responsibilities, is try to get to know as many of the special ed students as possible, especially those who are in out-of-district placements, for a couple of reasons. One, they had already been children for whom removal from the district had been the right course of action, and yet our goal should always bring to be, to bring as many children back as possible, either because of the effectiveness of the location where they go to be schooled or in the rare cases where there's residential support, and also because they have a legal right to be in what's called the least restrictive environment. So that constantly should be a question you're asking, can they move to a less restrictive environment? One of those people was the young man that I'm here to tell you the story about tonight. And I think it's quite accurate to tell you that he was the most needy individual that the district has served, at least in the last, I think I'm comfortable to tell you, the last six or eight years, at least since the superintendent and maybe probably beyond her. Since he has, he had been placed in a residential setting that was the only location in the whole state when a search was done by the Auburn Public Schools now six and a half years ago. Only one location in the whole state said that they thought they would be one to serve him. So that alone should give you some indication that this was an extremely needy adolescent male at the time who had significant presenting issues. So for the following five years, up until two years ago, Auburn supported him. His family became, continued to be extremely involved in his life, and welcomed him on a regular, routine basis in, you know, to continue to be part of their family by bringing him home on weekends, once or twice a month, with very little support from anybody during that weekend, even though Auburn was actually paying for him to be at the residential location and paying for 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So when I came two years ago and tried to meet all of the students, including this particular man, young man, I also got to know the family. And so through that relationship of getting to know him and getting to know the family, we started to discuss about the satisfaction that the family first and foremost had. I professionally, I'll say, not just personally, I went and did direct observations of this young man. I came back with some serious concerns about whether or not he was really getting the kindest supports to progress toward an adult life, because at that point, he was, I think it was 18 and a half. So I knew that we were now on the cusp, as the superintendent indicated, on the cusp of looking toward aging out of special education and moving into adult services. And over the next approximately, I guess, nine or 10 months, the family and I continued to dialogue. I continued to go and do observations with the support of the district. Because of my concern, I approached the family and the superintendent and asked whether or not we could bring an outside evaluator in. It's a very unusual step for that to be initiated by a district. Usually, that's something, when somebody's not happy, a family will say, can we have an independent evaluation? But here, I wanted there to be another set of eyes and ears to look at this situation because it was very costly and there wasn't satisfaction from my point of view or from the families. And it wasn't preparing for a future that was a rich future, one where the quality of life of this young man was good, and support of the inevitability of him aging out of the wonderful services that Auburn was providing to him. And even in the case of that independent evaluation, there was serious concerns raised about whether or not he was being properly prepared for his future life. So that's the backdrop. So with that being the backdrop, the family and I had a number of meetings, a very supportive family, I cannot say enough about how wonderful this family is, and had very open discussions where they accepted some of the professionalism of Auburn staff and the outside evaluators, saying, you know, you people know a lot about, we love our son, and we know what we want for him, but we also think you know kind of the environment out there and what he needs to be prepared for. So with, really with leadership being shared between the family and us, we decided on trying to carve out a different future for him that did not look at, because there wasn't sufficient time, at an alternative 766-approved school. 766-approved schools are those that the state has looked at and granted that a placement at, there's already been determined rate, and they've been approved by the state. So it's a fairly simple process. You do a referral, they accept the student, and then we set up transportation, if it's a day person or however, and they go, and that's kind of the end of it. The case in question had been placed at what was called a sole source, it had not been an approved program. And what I thought we were envisioning in our dialogue with the family a year ago or so, probably also indicated that we were not going to go a traditional 766-approved school. And the family, with their great insight, said, it doesn't make a lot of sense to us for our son to have to go through a transition now, even though we think one's needed, but then go through another transition just in 18 months from now when he's going to age out of special education. So that made a lot of sense to me. And fortunately, I have worked in both the children's system and the adult service system, and I can kind of toggle back and forth, and I know what each one requires. And so we, the family and I, agreed that we would look to create what we thought was a custom-designed set of supports. We found two what are considered provider agencies, that's the term that's used in the adult service system, they're two nonprofit agencies, one of whom has an office right here in Auburn, even though they happen to be based in western Massachusetts. And we put together a combination of a residential provider in what's called a shared living model, which is a very unusual model and not the, not one that's used by everybody. It's a situation where instead of being in a group home or in an apartment program, because as we discussed this young man's need and his future, he's not, it was not expected that he could live in a group setting. That takes an awful lot of understanding and insight into all the people you live with. As you all probably know, living with families, it takes a lot of understanding, insight, patience, and love to live with three or four other people. Can you imagine what that might be like if you're an adult and you're living with people that you don't love, that they're not your family? Like if any of you lived in a dormitory going to college or something, or it didn't have the privacy of separate rooms and stuff? So there are, so people with disabilities do not necessarily all want to live with other people with disabilities or with the size of being three or four other adults. And the insight that this family clearly had, and I agreed, was that that was not going to be the kind of setting that would be supportive of this young man. So shared living seemed to be a good option, once the family explored it and learned about it. And then we also found an agency that operates what's called a dayhabilitate, a dayhabilitation center, a dayhab as it's typically referred to, that's a brand-new facility designed for this purpose, that provides both educational, habilitative, and vocational services. So we haven't lost the need to provide him with educational services, but they're very functional services and very focused on developing his skills, a lot of which have to do with following instructions, being compliant, not hurting himself, not being aggressive toward other people, and things like that. So with the Harzman Educational Associates, that's the name of the agency that provides the dayhab services, we pulled together a team that was 25 people large to start to have planning meetings. And Harzman Educational Associates, HMEA, and Non-Attack Resource Associates, and Auburn, UMass Medical has a brand-new service available to assist families in kind of figuring out some of the medical needs for adolescents and adults with autism. And the family was able to get their son enrolled with that brand-new program, so they came to the planning meetings. We actually involved the Department of Developmental Services, because even though they're not responsible to serve this person yet, we wanted them to be at the planning meetings, so that transition to 22 would go very smoothly. In some ways, my agenda was to make his life, one month before he turned 22, no different than what his life would be like one month after he turned 22, because that way you have the smoothest possible transition. Trying to think, there were no other agencies involved. And we went through a series of meetings. My role was really to facilitate that conversation, to maintain the responsibility of Auburn Public Schools, and making sure that we were continuing to provide him with a free and appropriate public education, to make sure that we were meeting the needs, his needs first and foremost, and the relationship with the family. But yet also be very mindful that if the conclusion that where he had been was not the best place for him, and not effective for him, and not preparing him for his future, that we also needed to make sure that there was standards in our plan that we could measure to determine whether or not those objectives were going to be met where he was going. So we put together a plan, we followed the regulations for the department, DESI, and went forward. And late October, he moved from the 24-hour-a-day, I would refer to it more as an institution where he lived on one floor and went to school on another floor, that was in Brighton, so you can also imagine that there was no casual involvement between he and his family, because it was an hour and 15 or 20 minutes east of here. He moved to his shared living location, which is within 10 miles of where we are right now, and within, less than 10 miles from his family's home, so that facilitates that casual involvement, which I think is healthy and good and the family wanted. The dayhab program is in Millbury, right off of Route 20, a brand-new facility. We put together a program where he is transported to his school slash day program. He gets all of the related services, whether or not that speech or OT or sensory integration that he needs, or physical therapy, which is not a great, big need of his. But speech certainly is, and sensory integration is. He gets a vocational component, and then he also gets a community component, and then he is returned to where he has a very rich life that he shares with one other person with a staffing model that provides backup for that. So that one person is not responsible for him 18 hours a day, seven, you know, seven days a week, there's, and other people. We made sure, Auburn made sure, that everybody was adequately trained. We made sure that the IEP process was being adhered to and honored. And also, one of the things that was critical, and I think the superintendent was particularly mindful of, was, did we have all the state approvals for this? Because remember what I said, this was not a run-of-the-mill example. We had to make application to get all of very individualized approvals. And I want to guarantee you, because the superintendent made sure of this to me, that all of the approvals have been sought. And he, he's moved in late October, and after the first three months that he was in his location, I have a write-up I will give you, but, so you don't have to memorize these statistics, but one of the things that I put together in a two or three-page write-up, especially hoping that other directors of pupil services or special ed directors can think about this kind of a model, because I think it's one that is applicable not to a lot of students, as I say in my write-up. I think actually here for, in Auburn, as of those now who are, say, 17 or 18 years old or older, I think this model is probably applicable to four, maybe, maybe five. I don't think it's applicable, you know, we have over 300 children who are on IEPs in Auburn. So it's, it's not going to be something that's done for everybody, but for some of the more seriously involved young men and women, I think that this is a model that bears replication. But in the first three months, because I thought that was a sufficient length of time to give us some data, is this young man reduced his aggressive behaviors by 55% in his educational day, and by 70% he reduced his self-abusive behavior. In his shared living environment, he reduced his aggressive behavior, his aggressive behavior by 71%, and his self-abusive behavior by 90%. And one of the things we weren't able yet to track and create data for, but we will, is that anecdotally, he had increased positive behaviors, that he had, he was now beginning to demonstrate that the family never thought he would actually be able to do. Things like participate in cooking near the stove, not just stirring something over at the table, because there was more concern in the past that if he was near a stove, he could get hurt or somebody else could get hurt. So some of that anecdotally has only thus far been, been recorded, but it is something that we're going to make sure is done. Because of this family's involvement and commitment to not just themselves, but to other families, as your chairman knows, our Special Education Parent Advisory Council wanted to host a meeting to demonstrate this example, this model for other people. In pursuit of inviting people, we actually invited the state, the DESI Director of Special Education. When I called her and outlined for her what we had done, she invited the mother in this case and I to go and present to the State Special Ed Parent Advisory Council, which we did in early March, if I remember correctly. We were very positively received. Matter of fact, they referred to this as the kind of best practices that they really wanted to promote across the state, and asked us if we would actually present at a conference later in April, although that doesn't look like that's going to happen, because it looks like they've already got a full number of presenters. But we went ahead and hosted last week, because it got postponed because of one of the snow days, our own Special Ed Parent Advisory Council, hosting a meeting here. And certainly, in the past, in the two years I've been here, we've had meetings with three, four, or five people would show up, which is not uncommon, by the way. We had approximately 60 people show up last week, or the week before. We had people from as far away as the Berkshires and a parent from Andover. And I only know those two examples because they came up and introduced themselves to me, so I have no idea where other people came from. But within the parent world, the word was put out there that Auburn had done something which didn't need recognition as much as it needed the opportunity to be replicated for other families in other places, because we've really bridged the children's services to the adult services. And that's really the key message that I want to, want you to take away from this, is that the legal requirement under IDEA, the reenactment of IDEA in 2004, really emphasized the importance of transitional services. And there have even been some court cases here in Massachusetts that have made it a much more complex set of requirements than people had even anticipated. And this is an example, though, I think, of where, when there's good communication and a trusting relationship between a family and a school district, you can really create things that other people only dream about. And this is a wonderful success story, and certainly the support of, you know, Mary Ellen and the staff here, and the involvement with the family is really why it could happen. And it was actually fun to be able to, from my point of view, it was one of the best things I've done since I was here, just in the point of view of interesting and exciting, to try to push the envelope, and ultimately make sure that this young man's quality of life has dramatically improved. So that's my overview, but I'm happy to answer any questions, and then I do have the two-page outline just to give you. One last word is, my outline was not written for you. My outline was really written for special ed directors, thinking that they may be some of the people that have the most difficulty, if they don't already know about the adult service system, to kind of wrap their head around, what is it that Auburn really did? And I've already received a phone call from one special ed director in Andover, after the parent who was here a couple of weeks ago went back and told them, and the special ed director called me and said, what did you do? But anyway, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I appreciate your time.
Just to share, if there are any questions, I did receive a call, not to any confidentiality issues, but from a woman who advised me of a meeting that was, he was discussing and inviting us if you wanted to attend, however, we were attending other meetings with our budget season kicking off. And what I will tell you is this, I, she had nothing but high praise for the district and Mr. Campbell, and it is collaborative effort between the family and the district, and she had nothing but high praise to say about you and how happy she was. And I just wanted to pass that along to the rest of the committee, and I thank you. I sat with her on the committee when you interviewed, I remember her and how passionate she was then, and she was the same over the phone. And it was really nice to hear. It was a really wonderful story about really providing services to this person that wouldn't have had some of the opportunities he's having now, by exactly how it is on our memorandum from the superintendent, you know, really thinking outside the box. And I commend you for that personally, and thank you on behalf of the district.
Thanks.
Yes, I have a question. Is this model a work in progress, or is it pretty much set up the way you want it right now? How much work is to be done on it?
I think as a model, it's set, but I am, I say that because it's set for this young man, and it's, it's designed to change with him over the course. He will continue to be eligible for special ed services for approximately, I think it's 18 more months, maybe it's a little more, I can't, I have to, anyway. I know when his birthday is, I just can't remember what year he was born, but it's approximately a year and a half to two more years. And it's really designed to continue to change. Matter of fact, when I negotiated the contracts with the two agencies that I mentioned, I wanted to assure everyone's safety, both the staff's safety and this young man's safety. So unlike how I go into some negotiations that I've conducted in the past, I really went in, and I don't want to say with a blank check, but I went in saying to them, I want you to tell me what you need, because I want everybody to be safe. Because this young man, as the statistics, you can infer into the statistics I gave you, has, has been self, very self-injurious and has been very aggressive in the past, which were part of the reasons why only one agency six years ago, or six and a half years ago, accepted him. But, so they, they gave me a proposed budget. Well, when my negotiations started, I said, okay, I, I accept that, but I also expect you to be effective. And therefore, this level of staffing for the first six months is acceptable to me, but not the last three months. Because if you're effective, you shouldn't need all that, all that staff. So we then negotiated what I referred to as a blended rate, because I didn't want all the business offices to get all cranky about, you know, we had a rate that, that went from October to, you know, April, and then we had a different rate from, you know, from April, May, and June. So we came up with one rate until, until we went to June. But I also said that because I expect them to be both effective and this to be changed, when we renegotiate the next year, I expect to use the last quarter rate from this year as a starting point for next year. And they said, you're right, we ought to be effective, and we're confident we're going to be. And if they aren't, then we, we are obligated to him and we'll make adjustments. But I think what'll happen over the course of the next year or two is that the staffing needs will go down, but his program needs will change, and he'll be more in the community and more doing job exploration as he has his behaviors intact, as his social skills develop, as the, frankly, as he acts in more of a way that society will accept him on a regular, routine basis. That wouldn't have been the case five or six years ago, but it, but it's, I can tell you now, it's more the case than today than it would have been nine months ago. And it's really because of the, what, what we've done here collaboratively with these two agencies and this family. So that's, so it's designed to be a flexible model, but I also think that it has, because it, in the sense that it's set, it's something that I think we, I've already opened a dialogue with one other family, and I will continue to do that with other families, that I think this might be appropriate for, and they can reject it if they don't like the idea. And as I anticipate getting phone calls from my colleagues in the area, I will both promote it as a model, but one then that needs to be individualized for the students that they have in mind.
Quickly, I admire your passion and, and the fact that you actually went out and sought out a better situation for the student. What do we have in place to ensure that someone down the road is going to recognize that? Is there something in place? I mean, you went looking for it. You said, I'm not happy with, with the services. Someone else could easily turn their back on a situation like that and say, he's, he's out of our hands now. Is there anything in place for someone else to recognize, or for the superintendent to recognize that we may need to delve a little bit deeper into it?
I think the answer, it's, the answer is that we need to be very mindful that out-of-sight should not be out of mind, and I think that's really what it boils down to. You know, the superintendent being aware of the fact that we have X number of students who are out of the district, not just what does that mean financially, but what kind of quality are we getting in the services that are being delivered? Technically, we're responsible to monitor those services. That's one of the things that when we had the coordinated program review, was reviewed by DESI when they were here last fall. But I really think it's more a matter of what are the standards that you set? You know, and I think that that comes from you as the school committee, and it comes from the superintendent, and it comes from whoever's in the position that I'm in here. And, you know, are, is, are we allowing out-of-sight to be out of mind, or do we go out and look at what we see and then apply a standard to that and determine is, are the services not just adequate, are they what we think that they should be? And are, is our goal to return that person? Because if, if the requirement arises that a student has to go to an out-of-district placement, it's because they're not succeeding here, or because we're failing them here, however you want to look at that. And so if we embrace the fact that we have to have high expectations, both for their performance and for our performance, then we should constantly be asking ourselves, what do we do to meet all the needs of the students, not just those who are here now? You know, the, the big-ticket items call, clearly call people's attention to them. But that's, that's a standard that we have to have set in every single school that's both here in Auburn and every single placement that we do. And I think that's really the answer, which is kind of a vague answer, it's not embedded in, in a person, I think it's embedded in the culture of a school district. And certainly, if people bring passion and bring that standard, that has to be recognized and supported. And, and I'm not suggesting it isn't here, but I think that's the other part, is if somebody shows that kind of initiative, it needs to be acknowledged, as opposed to sometimes when you think out of the box. And I'm not saying this to praise Mary Ellen, but when I went to her, like the example of, of the program evaluation, I think, I think I surprised her when I went there, I can't speak for her, but I think she very appropriately said, why? And I thought that was an important question. Why, why should we spend X number of dollars to do this? You know, if, if nobody else is clamoring for this, Phil, why are you raising this? And I, I thought that was a very legitimate question. I answered it, obviously, to her satisfaction. So instead of looking and saying, well, that may or may not be a good idea, but that's not $3,000 we have to spend, so let's not spend it. That wasn't the response. The response was, okay, you think this is money well spent? I'm approving it, let's see if it is. And when I got the report, I gave her a copy of it. I said, you don't, you don't have, you have enough to read, but if you want to- I said, "You don't have, you have enough to read, but if you want to, you can read it for yourself." And one of the things I'll tell you that I hadn't been prepared to tell you, that report was so significant, the families asked for it not to be shared with the agency that he had been placed with. They were concerned about that. They were concerned about the agency's reaction to that. They thought that it spoke very accurately, but not very positively, about his previous placement.
I will share with you too, the parent did say that to me, that the services that are being offered now to the child are significantly better at a significantly lower cost. I mean, so there's something else in this that we haven't heard, is that even though the child is receiving better services, I think, I want to say, I even think she said 27% was the number I think she shared with.
It's in what I passed out to you. Actually, if you compare the actual expense for fiscal '12 with the projected expenses for fiscal '13, and we're almost at the end of fiscal '13, it represents, I think it's a 24.7% reduction. And as I indicated to you when I renegotiate the contracts for the next year, if there's a reason to spend more than the fourth quarter, we should, and I will. But I expect that the actual fiscal '14 cost will go down slightly. I don't think it'll be a 24.7, so please don't hold me that, Mary Ellen. I think it will probably go down some. But, and I'm glad you brought that up, but I also think it's important that that got brought up by you. I did not want to come in here and say to you, "I've saved a lot of money," because that's not the important story. The important story here, I think, is the quality of life for this young man and the collaboration and the trust. Because if this family did not trust Auburn, and they've been appreciative of what the Auburn School District has done for many, many years, that far exceed my brief time here, and that's important for you to know. But if that trust was not here, nothing like this could have been risked. Because whenever you're going to take a leap of faith, there has to be trust. And that's really the underlying story that, to any of my colleagues out there who learn about this model, I won't promote it as a cost-saving model. I'll promote it as a model that's around quality of life and one that can only happen if you have a trust relationship with the family and that you act in a professional manner, which I think in this case, you know, we brought our behavior specialist into this. He's now, this is the second year that there's been a full-time behavior specialist in the district. He's now actually the chair of this IEP meeting, I E team. I kind of chair the meetings. But he's responsible for the IEP. He participates in a monthly clinical meeting with the clinical people from each one of those provider agencies to make sure that everything's on track. So we're taking this very seriously, and I'm confident that there will be ups and downs in the statistics about his behavior, undoubtedly. But I think overall, there's a clear trend that will show that he is both reducing the inappropriate behaviors, and once we go beyond the anecdotal information, we'll be able to provide statistics, I think, for the initiatives that he's showing and the new skills that he's developing that had not been anticipated. Wayne, did you have a question?
I just want to say thank you for the presentation, because it's always good to have department heads come up here and inform us so we're informed. But I've been on a school committee for approximately 10 years now, and I have seen a big change in complaints about the special needs since you have arrived. And with the program you're talking about tonight, I'm very impressed, and I hope that you keep moving forward the way you speak to help them out because they need it. And I just wanted to thank you.
You're very welcome.
And your team.
Thank you. I will.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do want to recognize Phil and the team. It really was, as I noted in here, out of the box, thinking that the primary benefit was helping a child and improving his quality of life, which is something that we take seriously for every one of our children, whether we educate him here or out of the district. Okay, the next presentation we have, we have Mr. Rick Ringard here, who was served as the chairperson of the school building master plan team that has been meeting. Mr. Proudy is also here. He's served as the chair of the educational subcommittee of this planning team. So with your permission, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Ringard to present the report.
Hi, good evening. As Mary Ellen said, I chaired the committee for the team, and Mr. Proudy did the educational plan part of it. So what I'll try to do, I think you've all got a copy of this, I'll try to go through it and touch most of the points, and then if you have questions, I'm sure one of us can answer for you. The Auburn School Committee formed the School Buildings Master Plan Team in November with the goal of trying to come up with a possible reuse of the current Auburn Middle School, which is the Swanson Road School, should the new school be built at West Street. And the committee is kind of a large committee, consists of about 20 people, maybe half of them from the educational side of it and then half from the town side of it. And it's important to note that the work that we did has nothing to do with the West Street School. It's merely telling, trying to come up with a reuse of the old school should the West Street School go forward. Initially, we were, thought we'd be in much more depth than we ended up, but one of the uses we thought we would explore would be other uses that the town may have for the building. They indicated, the town administration indicated, that they have no other use for the school. And we, our observations is that the, obviously, the best use is as a school. I mean, that's what it was built for, that's what it's laid out for. Because the reuse of the school would be as an elementary school, we looked at all five of the schools, the middle school and the four elementary schools, tried to give a comprehensive vision as far as which way we would go as it, you know, again, should this be built, when it's built, I'm sorry. And just one note, we had plenty of floor plans, we had all sorts of information, and there's been a ton of previous studies done, so we incurred no costs for this study. We did look at the, from the MSBA standards, and looked at the gross square footages that they recommend, and that roughly is 150 to 180 square feet per student. And then the classroom sizes are typically 1,100 to 1,300. But that, it's also noted in the standards that that's a new construction standard, and obviously, if you have the existing schools, they can be a little bit less than that, and you kind of have to adapt to what they have. The next part of it, we looked at what we actually had in the five schools, the square footages and the age of them. And really, the thing that really jumps out at you is that the middle school is the youngest at 53 years old. Bryn Mar is 63. Packard is 84 years old. Mary D. Stone is 85 years old. And Julie Bancroft is 95 years old. So we've certainly got our money out of the buildings, there's no doubt about that. As far as student population, we took the last 10-year averages of the MSBA enrollment projections and averaged them and came up with 462 for the K-2 population and 520 for the grades three to five. And if you look at those, I think these are certainly adequate numbers. I don't think they're going to go over there. So at the first meeting, we really kind of kicked it around, and it really appeared that the obvious way to go would be to make the Swanson Road building three through five, and two of the other four remaining schools would be used for K through two. So with that goal in mind, we broke into two committees, one to look at how the ed plan would fit into it, and then the other to look at the existing buildings, utility costs, that sort of thing. That committee, we've really put on hold until, if until this thing does go through, and then we can get back into that a little bit more. But the ed plan, we're able to meet, they went through the Swanson Road School, and feel that it's certainly a viable option. Some of the points that they came up with, because the K through five students stay with one teacher all day for the most part, instead of moving classroom to classroom, the Swanson Road Building will handle essentially the same number of K through five students as it did, as it does in the current middle school. But it works out a lot better, and the severe overcrowding is, sort of goes away because the kids are staying in one room. Second issue was that the common areas, the cafeteria, the gymnasiums, the auditorium in the elementary schools is one area per building, so that they're, each function, the gymnasium, the cafeteria, and the auditorium are all infringing on time and spaces. So you're kind of going to move people out, you know, for one function and then work around that. That problem goes away if the kids are all moved into the middle school, into the Swanson Road School. The other issue is that the current elementary grades, elementary schools, have minimal dedicated library and technology. And if you whack through them, you can really see that it's, everything's been squeezed in and squeezed in, and that, again, goes away with the moving the K through five into the Swanson Road Building because they've got dedicated rooms for those functions. The other, one of the other thoughts is that combining the, combining two current elementary schools into one building will have personnel benefits, both from a financial and an efficiency. Some of the specialists now, I believe, go building to building. That's eliminated for the most part, or at least a great deal of it will be eliminated. The collaboration between the teachers, when they're all in one group, will be much better as it is in the high school and the middle school. And then there will be some consolidation of personnel will result from staffing one building as opposed to two. The, combining the two elementary schools will have an advantage for operating and maintenance costs. Obviously, the Swanson Road Building is 40 years younger than the other elementary schools, at the least 40 years younger, so that the maintenance and the utility costs should be substantially better. And then two of the buildings are going to go away. Anyone that drives through town early in the morning knows that the big issue is traffic, where there's a phenomenon that everybody drives their kids off to school now. And that really, at some of the buildings, you just can't deal with it. There isn't a physical way to fix Mary D., as an example. At Swanson Road, that site is big enough, it's, we should be able to queue the cars in and redo the parking lot a little bit. So that issue should really go away for the most part. As far as funding, you folks have held off on spending some of the CIP funds, both the approved ones and the projected ones, so that there should be money available to do renovations as we go forward. And it's assuming that the major, they're not going to be major renovations, but rather minor wall relocations, new interior finishes, and hardware, security upgrades, that sort of thing. Not sure that you have enough money to cover everything, but it doesn't, it certainly, it's a good jump on it, so. Timing and the phasing, it can be done, if it's approved next month, it can be done over the next two years, which really gives you the summer of '13, summer of '14, summer of '15. So that should be plenty of time to do whatever you have to do. So the final recommendation, if the West Street Middle School is approved and built, the committee recommends that the existing Swanson Road Middle School be used for grades three through five and that grades K-2 be housed in two of the remaining elementary schools. We further recommend that the committee continue to work to determine which two of the four remaining schools be used for K-2 students and identify the means and procedures to take the two remaining schools offline. That's really it. I'd be happy to answer any of the questions.
Are there any questions?
Thank you.
I have just one comment. I have to say that Mr. Ringard, for those who are watching and don't know who Mr. Ringard is, he played such an important part in getting our high school built. And I was thrilled that he was on this committee because he does just such a wonderful and thorough job with everything that he does. And thank you so much for all the work that you did.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Proudy as well.
Thank you. If there are no further questions of discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to recommend, I'll make the motion to accept the recommendation of the APS School Buildings Master Plan Team as written.
Second.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Should we add in if the middle school is, no one is built?
I think that's what this is all contingent of.
Yeah, part of the recommendation.
Part of the recommendation. All those in favor?
Hi.
If I can just echo Mrs. Gribbin's comments, Mr. Ringard, you did a tremendous job shepherding us through this process. Lots of experience with the high school project, so we look forward to continuing to work with you. And also, great thanks to Mr. Proudy for his continued leadership as well.
It was good. And, you know, run, and you knew the educational plan, obviously, where a lot of us don't, you know, just kind of trying to fill our way through, but it worked.
It did work. It worked well. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Moving now to the Student Government Day.
Yes. This Friday, actually, Mr. Canard and Mr. Venatio, if you remember, they went, they led the We the People program that was held down at Harvard University a few months back. They will be taking student representative Gabriella Laurie along with alternate Robert Sivret to the Student Government Day down at the State House. So at the April 10th school committee meeting, or if not that one, one shortly thereafter, they will be in attendance to provide the committee with an update of what they learned in that process. And also, I wanted to let you know that you may see Wally the Green Monster, NACN, was out and did some filming at Packard School recently with the permission of the students' parents. It only showed students from behind, but it was quite an exciting day at Packard to have him in attendance. And perhaps you brought Good Luck, the opener, down at Yankee Stadium yesterday.
I guess we move on to unfinished business.
Extremely excited to share with you this evening that the middle school project received the unanimous support of the MSBA Board of Directors today at their meeting. Mark Imsey, actually Eddie Kazanovich and I attended. Ms. Jacobson had an event that she needed to attend, actually at the Worcester Airport, announcing Jet Blues coming to the Worcester Airport. So we attended along with Paul Needler and Eric Moore, and it was a, we knew, or we believed we would get the approval, but there was something very, a great relief when we got the unanimous support of that. So I just share that with you and the excitement that we have for it. The other piece I share with you, Mr. Jason Tate from the Office of Campaign and Political Finance actually did a training session here in this room probably about four to six weeks ago. And just to be sure that as we began and undertook the process to seek the support and approval of the Auburn voters for this project, that we did everything as we are required to do. And one of the things that he indicated is that should elected boards be interested in voting their support of this project, they may do so. And even if they wanted to write a letter of support, one could be drafted, and it could actually be posted on the website. So I share that with you as informational and leave it to you for your decisions.
I think it is a, be a good topic for discussion. I personally would like to see this board, I would entertain a motion that we're in support of this project moving forward, and to direct the superintendent to write a letter stating such to be posted on the website, so the community knows that we're in support of this project as a committee.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's a unanimous vote.
Excellent, excellent. They have unanimity. That's great, right? Exactly. I will draft that and bring it back to the meeting we have next week for your signature, and we'll post it up there. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's happy music.
The, I have no news to update, to provide you regarding, excuse me, regarding the FY14 budget, other than what was reported in the newspaper. I think it was probably this morning or yesterday morning regarding a real emphasis that came out from Speaker DeLeo regarding transportation. So we will be reaching out, and in fact, at the April 10th school committee meeting, Senator Moore will be in attendance to address concerns. And I know that from my perspective, I will be reaching out to our representatives just to encourage them to stay on track in supporting education funding. And not that other priorities don't deserve their support, but obviously, from our perspective, education is the primary, the primary function that we need. On the May 1st school committee meeting, I will be bringing forward information regarding updates on the Michael's Educator Plan.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt this for a moment? I apologize, I didn't realize you were moving into the next, through the chair. May I ask a question? Dr. Bernal, the other day, I read an article in the paper, and it was confusing to me.
Okay.
And I apologize, you know, I should have came prepared with it. It had something to do with a school district, I want to say Sutton or Grafton, that they were proposing legislation that stipulated that because the communities as a whole had to abide by the two and a half proposition, that they were, that they were presenting legislation that said that the school department, that they wanted the school department to have to abide by that, those same guidelines. Do you, do you know that the article I'm speaking of?
I do, I did.
Can you kind of explain, I didn't quite understand what that was about.
I was actually discussing it with a couple of superintendent colleagues yesterday. I don't feel comfortable speaking on it intelligently right now. We were actually having a discussion, and I can certainly look into it and get back to you.
Could you please?
I could.
Because the article, it concerned me a little bit, but I wasn't quite sure how to interpret it.
I will. I believe it was Representative Durant, if I'm not mistaken, who may have proposed that.
Well, what concerned me too was that it said in the article, you know, Senator Moore was, was, had said that he would be in support of it, and I'm just not quite sure what this legislation is really saying.
Okay. I will certainly look into it and get back to you.
Great, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
No problem. Great. So at the May 1st meeting, I'll be bringing forward a full update for you regarding progress on goals, as well as the overall superintendent's evaluation, and at that time, you'll get blank copies of the document for you to complete and return to Chairperson Laurie on May 15, yeah, May 15, and to be discussed in open session at the June 5th School Committee meeting. Just as an update. In terms of the press box, Mr. Page, if you have anything to share, please, please jump in. Bay Path is out there, they're doing the rough electrical work right now. The Kubla continues on progress, and we continue to move forward with it, so it's exciting. And as you can see, it's in great shape.
Well, there's not much I can say.
Well, that's great.
Good job.
The, just as a reminder, the strategic plan update, we'll actually start our first meeting on Tuesday, April 23rd. There are, and I open this up to members of the community, we've advertised this now in several of our One Call email notifications, it's been on local cable channel, it's been in the Auburn News. We've got administrators and educators, as well as school committee, who will be there, and I believe to date, we only have one parent who has expressed interest. So just want to open that up for anybody who might be interested. It really is a process that I think is much richer, if it includes many stakeholders, and certainly, the parents and community members are tremendous stakeholders in this process.
Through the chair, if I may?
Yes.
Just as a suggestion, which you may have already thought of, is perhaps you could also ask the elementary schools' principals to maybe put a little, you know, notification to the PTOs, so when they have their meetings, maybe, you know, the chair of the PTO, the president of the PTOs from each of the elementary schools might be able to just bring that up at one of their meetings, just to-
Good idea. And I'm actually going to be going to the District One PTO meeting on Tuesday to give them another update regarding the project.
Because there's so much going on, you know, people might just overlook this.
There is, there is, yeah.
You know, and another thought would be, is if there's any high school students that might want to be, might want to rub some-
That's a great idea. Great idea. It's a good idea.
Yeah.
I will reach out on that. And a reminder, as we do each meeting, that bus applications are due May 1st, and again, those go out, email notifications, hard copies have gone home, and they are available on our website as well, so we're hopeful that everyone will complete them by the May 1st deadline. Excuse me. And in terms of upcoming events, there are numerous that are here. We've got the kindergarten screening, Community Reading Day, I may have mentioned, at the last event, and also wanted, just as a reminder, one week from tomorrow is the rescheduled Family Math Night for grades K to five. They do it jointly and have now for a few years. It's held in the cafeteria of Auburn High School, and it is a tremendously fun event. Lots of kids and their families engaging in a variety of math activities and technology. It's really a very nice event.
Does anyone else have anything on your business? We can now move on to the business and finish report.
Great. Mr. Dede's not able to be here, he had a family commitment this evening, but I do share with you the first set of omnibus approval transfers, as granted by you last time. As you can see, some of them actually address just some cleaning up of minor shortfalls in accounts, and others are trying to address needs that perhaps have gone unmet, in particular with regard to the common core curriculum needs, to be sure that we have ample supplies of materials in our classrooms. The next item is pulled from the Department of Education website, and this is available for anyone to go and peruse. It shows the per pupil expenditures for students, and actually has a historical perspective from FY10 through FY12, and it also breaks it down in terms of the different categories that Mr. Dede and other business managers report, including administration, instructional leadership, guidance, pupil services, operations, and maintenance, and the like that are listed there. So I share it with you as informational, and would be happy to answer any questions if you have them. Mr. Dede also did provide a snapshot comparison with the other Southern Worcester County districts that we oftentimes use for comparative data. There is a year-to-date budget report dated March 26th. We do have another one that we are preparing for next week's packet that will be dated April 5th, so you will see some adjustments noted in there, but we continue to review this regularly and make sure that we are addressing needs, particularly those that impact students directly. And then finally, the ARRA quarterly reports. This funding actually ends at the end of this fiscal year, so too will these quarterly reports, but you've seen these in the past. Mr. Dede updates these with any new information or encumbrances or requisitions that have been processed.
We will now move on to policies, if there are no questions, the first being legal counsel.
These two, should you wish to do so, you could take together, or you could do separately. These are the ones that came as a result of the training session, and then we revise these fairly considerably, considerably, and have been approved on first reading, so it is my recommendation that you approve them this evening on second.
I like to see them done individually.
I entertain a motion in regards to legal counsel.
I make a motion to approve BDG legal counsel on second reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
I'll make the motion to approve BEDH public participation at school committee meetings on second reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
I believe we do have to go into executive session this evening. I would entertain a motion.
I make the motion, we'll move into executive session, heard MGL Chapter 30, Section 21-2, discuss negotiation strategies with the characters and cafeteria workers.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mrs. Grivens?
Yes.
Mrs. Gibbrey?
Yes.
Mr. Scobie?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Laurie?
Yes. Good night, everyone.